I call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Could everyone please stand up and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a quorum. All the commissioners are present. This is a business meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the commission as a whole and not individual commission members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Commission action on items brought up and called to the public is limited by the open meeting law. The commission may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard or discussed in call to the public. Individuals are limited to three minutes. Commissioner Turner, was there anyone that wanted to speak in the call to the public? Or just action items?
Uh, just action items.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to C. Minutes. C1, consider approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Deputy Town Clerk. The Planning and Zoning Commission held on January 26, 2023. Did the commission members have an opportunity to review the notes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any amendments, corrections, or issues?
No.
Can I get a motion from one of the members?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the January 26, 2023 meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All is in favor? Aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous. We're gonna move on to D. New business. I am going to abstain from this vote and turn the chair over to Vice Chair Harry Turner.
I will also recuse myself due to a conflict of interest.
We're just gonna move forward and he's gonna-
Yeah, go ahead. I think we have also a representative from Delaney Property Group, correct?
I figured we'd just wait. Are we connected?
Parker, you there?
We might just have to move forward.
Our first item, D1. We're gonna review and discuss site plan SPR 23-262 for the proposed Dollar Tree new build at 141 West White Mountain Boulevard, Lakeside, Arizona 85929. APN 212-30-015C. I was gonna turn this over to Jeremiah when he's-
Okay, so we have applicant for 141 West White Mountain Boulevard, immediately to the south of Town Hall here. They are proposing a Dollar Store, a Dollar Tree specifically, on this site. They submitted a complete set of building plans as their site plan. The site plan is a part of that package. Did the commission have enough time to review the packet materials?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna go ahead and just dive into my staff report. And this is strictly based off of analysis of the code and the requirements for this project to meet the town code. So some of the things that I noted in the site plan and the landscaping specifically was that they were showing that there was not enough trees on the street initially and that there was not screening on the HVAC unit. And one of the biggest issues was that it's shown as a metal building. And then there was some screening issues to the adjacent neighbors as well on Summer Haven that I noted. And the applicant did clear up the metal building. They are proposing to wrap that with the EFA system and CMU block so it would not be metal exposed. So that addresses that item that I was concerned about. They revised the landscaping plan along the street to show the required amount of trees. They were showing 14, now they're showing 21, and those will be minimum two-inch diameter. One of the things that is still lacking is the screening component for the residential neighborhood Summer Haven, immediately to the south. I did not see that on this, on the revised middle. And what we're asking is that the commission address that tonight with the requirement for screening being a six-foot CMU block and trees every 15 feet. Exterior, the lighting plan was fine, and their parking requirements are met. And is there any other questions from the commission? Specific questions?
Treated block, are you meaning painted, stained, or just left?
So there's only a small portion on the bottom that's CMU block. We don't have the architect on, so he can't speak to that. Maybe you can. Could you approach the podium? Yeah, 'cause for our mic system, we won't be able to pick it up later in the minutes.
Introduce yourself too.
Hey, Mike Delaney, Delaney Property Group. Thank you, members of the commission and staff for being here tonight and considering our request. We, uh, we, we did, Jim has worked with us and we've, we really do appreciate y'all working with us. And so, we submitted, had some nuances we needed to fix, and came back. And so, from what I remember, and I don't know if we addressed that, but we did propose a eight-foot wooden privacy fence along the residential zoning. Is that, is that on the landscaping?
So, um, the only thing that's shown is that there's a, I believe, six-foot, because you'd have to-
Okay.
Six-foot would be max, six-foot, but that's only around the mechanical system. And that was kind of thrown in there this morning after I mentioned that to your architect, Mark Aldrin.
And that's just for the mechanical? You're talking about, is this mechanical, or?
There's, there's two screening requirements. One was for mechanical, and he covered that. And then, uh, what I'm not seeing is the requirement for screening being met for the residential, between a buffer for the residential commercials, specifically trees and a six-foot CMU block.
I think, yeah, 'cause we talked about trying to cover it with landscaping, and because the road, we pushed the road to the south there to account for detention, we weren't able to put, we didn't have room for the landscaping, and so we put, we proposed a, a wooden fence along that line. If they missed it, that's what we had discussed. It may be on here. And it may, it may not have been called out, but that's, uh, that was, that was what, you know, that was our proposal, six-foot privacy wooden fence.
Okay.
And y'all can take that into consideration.
Commissioner, yeah.
Jeremiah, uh, what were you at, 16 trees, now you're at 21?
We were at 14, I believe, and now we have 21. This is on the front. And there's a total requirement of excluding those 21 trees in the front that are being provided. There was, I believe, 34, it's in the staff report, additional that were required on that property. And that's based off of the impervious area created by the parking. And they also met that requirement as far as the number of trees on the property. But what they're not meeting is the screening requirement.
Yeah, I understand that. But you were talking, so two-inch diameter trees?
Right.
Can't we, uh, two-inch diameter, probably four-foot, maybe three-foot? Why can't we go back in the amount of trees that they have and we can get larger trees put in there? That would look more presentable. Because the two-inch round tree is gonna take how long to grow?
It'll take some time, but they are getting, they are preserving trees, as many as they could, so they'll get credit for those.
Okay.
But the code doesn't allow for, um, uh, swapping of diameter trees, larger diameter trees, for the amount of trees. What it does allow is some, some calculation allowance for if they include grass, which they are, including sod. But they meant the requirement for trees based off of site trees and also along the street. So there's two different requirements for trees, and they're meeting both those now. They weren't initially, but on the revised middle, they did meet those requirements.
And they're required to put the sod in?
They're not required to, but they're showing that on their landscaping plan, so they were going, that's the plan that they're gonna proceed with.
With our water shortage, they're putting sod in?
There's not that much.
Maybe you can go a natural landscape?
I'd be all about a natural landscape of a sod. Uh, but, I mean, we'll, we'll do whatever, really, the will of the ask. We're, we're trying to meet-
What's up to-
So the, so they already have shrubs everywhere, and-
Has to be watered.
And it has to be watered anyway, so they might as well just, and it's not completely covered with sod. It's just a small portion wrapped around the parking lot and part of the building, and I think part of the retention basin. So that was one of the other things I kind of want to touch on really quick, too, that I don't think I touched on in the staff report, is they're proposing a retention system, and I was hoping that their engineer would be online today, but obviously that's not even happening, so I'll just try to explain it. Basically, the town says that you're not allowed to have a retention system. So what I, what I said to them was, they could go, they have two avenues to pursue, either a variance, which they may be successful because there is site-specific issues where the water wouldn't really be able to drain to, and I agreed with the engineer's assessment on that. And the other option is to take an amendment to the town code to council, which I prepared that and it's ready to go next week to the council. So it sounded like, after talking with their engineer, that that's the route they wanted to go to. So this would be kind of contingent upon that being, that component being available to them, otherwise they would have to pursue a variance. So that's also something to consider.
So I do have a question on the drainage. I mean, could you explain that better? I mean, that's gonna be a huge issue.
So there's two types of drainage systems. There's detention, which is allowed. Basically, it slows water down and then releases it. This is a system that infiltrates and basically, it doesn't go anywhere except on the property unless there's an extreme event, and then it's gonna go everywhere, but we're gonna have other issues bigger than that anyway. So a retention system holds the water, doesn't release it. It's supposed to percolate down according to state standard within 36 hours.
What, I mean, so what type of event would the percolation system handle?
So, I have only reviewed, briefly reviewed, and this is more of a question for their engineer who's not online. But they have submitted a preliminary drainage report, and it should be in part of the packet of material that you had. But they're supposed to, they're supposed to be able to capture like a 100-year, two-hour event in that.
They're gonna use the Maxwell class, that's why you show what are your plans, so that's-
Right, and so the intent is that they will not increase off-site flows any more than there is there right now, and that's, that's a state standard.
But wouldn't the stormwater pond be the same as a retention pond?
So there's, in this case-
I'm looking at it.
In this case, yes. But in a detention case, it just takes the peak, flows, and meters those out. So it takes the peak off and slowly releases. So that's the difference. Those are currently, the detention system's allowed. And there was, um, there's kind of a discrepancy in our code as to retention being allowed and then specifically not allowed. So we're gonna look closer at that. I'm gonna take that, not to you guys, but to the council.
So they could possibly revert this stormwater pond into the retention pond?
It already is a retention system. So they have, what they, what they're proposing is retention, and it has a wet, a dry well in the middle, so it helps it to drain down. So, and they base that off of their geotechnical analysis, I'm assuming? And, and the fact that it has to perk down within 36 hours for back to control.
It's acting, it's technically acting its, its own intention, and it's a net. It's just not flowing the water off, offside. It's detaining it onside, which is, you know, a positive there.
It's a good system as long as you maintain it.
Right, and so that's one of the code amendments that I'm proposing, Commissioner Pence, is that not only is it required to drain down within 36 hours per state standard, but they also have to maintain it annually.
Yep.
And that's becoming a lot more common in a lot of municipalities, so it's not something we're not, we're, uh, we're not used to seeing. It's, it's, some of these, these, uh, older detention systems kind of get grown up. But yeah, that's, we'd be more than happy to do that, agree to that.
Now, in addition to all the trees, there's a large number of shrubs also that they're putting in. Is that correct?
Right. They actually are providing more shrubs than what was required, and they didn't reduce those. They kept that amount and increased the amount of trees. And a landscaping code requires that all of those be irrigated, and so they also have that on their landscaping plan, part of the irrigation system.
So is Dollar Tree associated with Dollar General, all the other stores, or no? You're just, you're your own entity?
Dollar Tree is, uh, Dollar Tree Corporation, the LTR is its own ticker. They bought Family Dollar five years ago, maybe six years ago. And so, yeah, they're, they're not associated with Dollar General, uh, but they are their own brand. And so Dollar Tree is different than Family Dollar. Family Dollar sells more groceries, and Dollar Tree is, you know, a lot of, um, arms of crowds, and, you know, like, teachers really like Dollar Tree, and, uh, but it's, it's a little bit of more, it's a different, their helium number's really high. They sell a lot of balloons, and, and, uh, so it's, it's, it's not Family Dollar. And that's, that's why the, uh, the Family Dollar, I believe, is gonna stay over there if they, I think they're, they're close to, and in their lease there, if they'll renew. They wanna be over there, but this would be a totally different brand.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Yes, sir. A couple of questions. On your refuse enclosure, I know you want to get it way back and out of the way and get it screened, but I know you got a private hauler, but still, it's very unsafe for that refuse truck to have to back through that parking area. I do recommend maybe that enclosure be moved more up toward the front, where the truck can just pull in, stab, back, and out.
How about the dumpster, or the, the-
Dump, yeah, dumpster.
Trash, trash truck. So, so that, we designed this based on a WB67, so I want to say it's 36 feet wide back there. So then, you know, that's for a tractor truck to come in. So, you know, a truck can pull in, come in, turn around, and so the idea there is that a smaller, um, uh-
Garbage truck.
Garbage truck will, can certainly turn around, and usually they come early in the morning or, or at some time when there's not many people in the parking lot. So, um, that, that's, that's a design, prototype design with 10,000 stores across the, there.
I would like to see that truck turning movement, though.
Okay, I've got a, we've got a WB67, we can send you the, uh, that, that truck plan.
Okay. And how's it being sewered?
From what I see in the plans, they tie into the system here at Town Hall. It's like, we have a lateral that goes through the back, along the property line, and then out through parking lot. So it looked like they were tying into that system.
Okay, I'll accept it.
And it's not a big sewer impact. I think they send us some, similar to a single-family home.
And will you have, will you have recycling?
Uh, yes, they recycle the cardboard.
That'd be inside the, okay, inside the refuse?
Yes.
I would rather see the refuse in the back of the store anyway. There's enough room for a tractor trailer, there's enough room for a garbage truck back there.
Absolutely.
So, appearance is what I would say.
Absolutely.
So if, how far off is ADOT from chiming in on a deceleration lane? Or, I mean, this has more parking spots than AutoZone, for sure, and they almost got sideways with that, you know?
Right, so I ran the calculations based off of our town code, and it was spot-on, actually. I was surprised on that one. Given some of the other discrepancies, and I don't know if they used our code or they have a different system that they use to calculate those numbers. But if they go over, we require more trees, but they were right on, literally spot-on. But I, I know that they had submitted a traffic impact analysis to ADOT, but I have not heard back from ADOT as far as any requirements that they may have. Have you got, have you any word from?
Okay.
So if, if ADOT all of a sudden says we need a deceleration lane, I mean, if just looking at the plan, that would push their parking back, that would change their landscape. I mean, what do we do at that point to maintain the agreement, you know, so that we don't do a late in the game? Oops, ADOT said we need to do a deceleration lane, and then, well, I guess we just don't do the landscape.
So if there was a deceleration lane, it would be in there right away. It wouldn't be on the parcel, so it wouldn't affect anything that, uh, that, that we're, we're working on.
And then, you know, just looking at the approvals, what, where is the Pine Top Fire Department in all of this?
So they are aware of this, and I'm sure certainly this project would have to be sprinklered and a riser system provided. But they reserved their comments for the building permit, so I didn't get any comments back from them at this point. They were just, um, I gave them the contact information for Delaney, specifically Mark Aldrin, and I think maybe Garrett Baker. But, um, so you guys need to have that conversation because they're also another permitting agency and whatever they, when, when we actually go to the building permit process, they'll have their review too, and there's a separate fee that they charge for that. They're gonna require things like Knox box, they're gonna require things like fire riser and sprinkler and stuff like that, you know, and access, obviously, the things that they're gonna be looking for.
They have enough pressure, water pressure in the line for the fire suppression, correct?
Um, I cannot attest to that. I know that we had some issues here at Town Hall.
But I can speak, I can speak, this, this building is in SaaS for sprinklers. It's, it's under, anything under 15,000 square feet. Uh, this is a 9,000, 900 square foot building. So, uh, we're, we're not gonna need sprinkler here unless there's some, something in the Arizona.
Um, I believe they're under the 2015 IFC code.
Okay, yeah, then, uh-
But they, they all have to make that determination.
In your comment, you said that the retention needs to be addressed in the form of a variance or allow the town to revise the code. Which one do you feel is a better one to go?
Well, it's really up to the applicant, so I've already started the process for amending the code, and that's the route that they chose. I presented both options, and they felt that was the better option because variance has specific requirements. I was also approached by the sign company representing you guys, and they wanted a sign that was beyond the scope that our code allows. And so they wanted to pursue a variance for that. I don't know the angle because I don't see it any different from any other property in town. I think perhaps for the drainage, they may have a shot at that because there is site-specific issues. But they chose to allow us to proceed to see if we could change the code, so. Those options were both presented to them, and their engineers selected to go with us changing the code. Those options were both presented to them and their engineers selected to go with us changing the code.
For clarity, the six-foot fence, it's going to be the entire perimeter of the property?
Just along the residential.
Summer Haven.
Yes, sir.
Right, so the recommendation from staff is that they be required to have the, uh, screening along the southern boundary with Summer Haven and also, uh, include trees on that. And I know that our, our road is there, but I'm sure that we're willing to lose some of that to, to, to the benefit of the residents of Summer Haven.
Initially, it sounds like the fence is going to be taller than the trees. You said that?
Six foot, they're, they're only, uh, it's either or. It's in our statute, only six-foot fence, correct?
Right, they'd have to get a variance for anything over six foot. And like I said, the, the recommendation is to require both of those.
And the emergency access drive along the portion, I guess it would be to the east, that will always remain closed, correct?
So are, are you referring to?
Dirt road with the.
Yeah, so that's kind of a, that's one of the roads that actually our Public Works crew uses sometimes when they leave our facility. And I think that's part of, um, the access agreement that was initially, some of the, um, underlying deed restrictions on the parcels that were placed on both these parcels before the town owned it. And so they're not infringing upon that, and I don't think that if they had a few trees, it wouldn't either.
Okay.
If it's closed, you mean the gate locked?
I think, I believe that our Public Works has a, has a key to that gate. And I don't think that that's an immediate access. They're not tying their parking lot into that.
Yeah, just want to make sure they don't think about that in the future.
Yeah, it would be pretty old enough that we wouldn't even use it. The gate was certainly be closed.
Any more questions?
I, I do have a question. You know, just listening to your comments about your partner's store, I don't remember the affiliation that you use, but, uh, you know, our town is not interested in losing tenants in buildings or having vacancies. And you said you think they, they would stay there.
Well, I know they will, as long as, as long as the landlord will renew their lease.
I mean, you guys, are you guys willing to provide any assurance of that? I mean, I know that's kind of a, but I mean, I, I can't see that the landlord would kick them out. They, they would love to have vacancy.
We, uh, they originally went to the landlord there and tried to expand that space, but couldn't get big enough for two footprints. So they wanted a whole Family Dollar and a whole Dollar Tree. And they couldn't make that work. So, so that's why they're, we're doing, doing just a Dollar Tree. They, they, they want both flags here in, in the town. So there's no, uh, that's, I'm, I'm sure of that.
Do you have any comments you want to share?
No, I, I think our process has gone really well and appreciate Jeremiah and the city working with us. And so if, uh, uh, we, we hope that you guys will consider it and, and we can push forward and, and, uh, bring in a new retail tenant.
We have some citizens who would like to speak. Randy Harris.
Good evening, my name is Randy Harris. I live at three-six-four West Summer Haven Lane. I've lived there for twenty-five plus years. Uh, I've seen a lot of changes. My concern with this Dollar Store going in, excuse me, is the, the light issue, the lighting issue. We have enough issues and the town has been grateful to curtail some of their lighting because their nighttime lighting comes right into our back bedroom. And we're down away from this proposed site, but I think the lighting is going to be an issue. Another thing is the, um, the drainage. Several years ago, the town put a retention pond right behind my house. Edge of the pond is about that far from my fence. And I wish it would drain in thirty-six hours, but during monsoons, it doesn't. We've had water, standing water in our, in that retention pond for at least five to seven days during the summer. Mosquitoes are an issue. That's my issue with the Dollar Store. I have, uh, four other residents who have submitted me letters. I'll give these to the commission if they would like it. I'd like to read them if I can. Summer Haven has been quite a, quite, Summer Haven has been a quite quiet community for many years. Having a Dollar Tree go in behind many of our friends and neighbors' property is not a compatible idea. It would surely decrease the livability and solitude we now enjoy. Of major concern, increased lighting will blot out the night sky. Noise will certainly increase as shoppers congregate. Increased traffic behind a subdivision, vagrants tend to migrate to such facilities. Home values are likely to decrease. As far as having another Dollar Chain in our community, it should be noted that this is not necessarily a positive contribution. According to the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, such store, such stores threaten businesses, particularly grocery stores, create and exacerbate food dessert, food deserts, target black and brown neighborhoods, create fewer jobs and pay lower wages than independent grocery stores, have poor labor practices, pressure suppliers to give them exclusive deals, extract wealth from the community, reduce tax revenues for local governments, erode community identity, have lax security and thin staffing, exacerbate traffic congestion and safety problems, are often cited for serious safety violations, provide poor value for, to customers, sometimes use illegal or restrictive business practices, can create or exacerbate stormwater runoff problems. Development sometimes destroys important natural and historic resources. Buildings are purpose-built and challenging to reuse, to reuse. Having said that, there is a marginally acceptable alternative. Have it move across the street. The old Chamber of Commerce area is at least away from the heavily populated areas such as Summer Haven. I hope the council takes into consideration the negatives of both the location and the impact of such stores. We live in a community that's already had, has had many choices for the poor and disadvantaged. It is difficult to understand why yet another community destroy is welcome or needed. Thank you. Thank you, Renee and Connie Holkins, three-ninety-four West Summer Haven Lane. That's the longest one. As to the proposed Dollar Tree location between the city building and the Summer Haven community on White Mountain Boulevard, we have concerns. It seems a bit curious as this comes up when many residents in our community are gone for the winter and therefore cannot demonstrate how much this truly means to us. A picture is worth a thousand words. A face-to-face discussion is priceless. When traffic is already challenging the White Mountain Boulevard, this location would make assessing our homes far more difficult. The addition of this business right in our backyards presents a clear and present danger to the value of our property. The noise and light pollution will play a part in the reduction of value in our homes as well as eroding our quality of life. Has there been an EPA study done on what another building might do to the wildlife? Deer and elk travel through there regularly. There is a building across Old Chamber of Commerce that's been an eyesore.
Mr. Harris, I failed to mention earlier, we have a time limit for every.
I got five minutes.
Vice Chairman Turner, um, Mr. Harris speaks for not only himself, but for his neighbors. Could we consider extending his time?
Okay. Please proceed. Okay.
Where would I leave off? Okay. It was a sale by the homeless and others until it finally burned. If Dollar Tree wants to compete with the Family Dollar location in the Safeway Center, that's better than our backyards, but not much better. The Family Dollar by Safeway and Dollar General just down the street by Darbers, we don't need a third enterprise in such close proximity. It's true, we don't need nor want this business near our homes. Clinton Cindy Wright, three-eighty West Summer Haven Lane. Uh, to whom it may concern, we just heard there are plans to put another cheap Dollar Tree between Summer Haven and Town Hall and Lakeside. How many cheap stores do we need? We have two Family Dollars and one Dollar General within two miles of each other. This Dollar Tree will take away privacy from the people whose homes will back up to it. We surely, we're sure they will be dealing with delivery trucks, possibility for homeless rummaging through trash bins and garbage trucks. And garbage trucks. We vote no for building in that area. Sincerely, Kathy and Robin Papel, three-seventeen West Summer Haven Lane. We are writing in disin opposition to, of the proposed Dollar Store construction. Today is, today, it came to our attention that there is a meeting to be held tonight about this issue. Some of the residents in our neighborhood of Summer Haven do not live in Lakeside full-time. We were extremely upset to find out about a meeting that concerns our neighborhood that we were not even able to attend, that the city is not required to notify us. There are already four Dollar Stores that are a few miles of this location. Most of the year, there are probably only around four thousand people and residents. That seems to be a little excessive. There is also the fact, business model of most Dollar Stores harm communities. It relies on relatively cheap labor and inexpensive goods and is designed to flourish when it, when its core customers are hurting financially. It also causes declines in large grocery stores, which increase the reduction of fresh produce consumption or household with lower incomes. There are several cities in the U.S. that are currently restricting growth of Dollar Stores. New, New Orleans, Louisiana has restricted new Dollar Stores from operating within two miles of an existing one. If that was the case here, with the, there would be no need for this letter. We are against any Dollar Store construction. Sincerely, Ed and Joanne Rollet, three-fourty West Summer Haven Lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwight, give the copy.
Mr. Jeffrey Punt.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Jeff Punt. I live at two-forty-eight West Summer Haven Lane. Basically, it's, excuse me, it could be south or it could be east. I live directly south of the proposed, in the big white house on the corner. The north-facing side of my two-story house would be impacted by the lights and the, and the signs. The vehicle headlights generate noise pollution and the build that would, and the noise that the build would bring and the constant foot traffic. Furthermore, foot traffic may impact the coming and going of those of us living in the area. I, for one, settled here for the peace of my property. I don't want the concerns or worries that the, that the project would bring, such as, I'll need to build a higher fence, buy curtains. The sign, believe it or not, the sign that the city has out there goes right into my bedroom window, on the south-facing bedroom window. I, I bought a heavier curtain to cover it. Um, I'll have to buy curtains, redesign my living space to block the lights and noise further impacting my view due to this project. Well, I need to worry about people wandering through my property or around my property, my personal property at all hours. Do I need to build a fence for that? Are they going to come and clean up my yard when all their or their customers' trash blow into it? How is this going to affect home values? Are they going to drop due to another Dollar Store? Three stores within a three-year, three-mile radius is already here. The noise, air quality from the construction itself, traffic, construction vehicles, deliveries, et cetera, in and out of the parking lot will impact those of us on its borders. What about of those that have medical issues requiring tanks to breathe? The constant traffic from customers and delivery trucks will disrupt the peace and air as well as the visiting wildlife in the area we call home. I also have a little note here from Dorothy Aery at three-twenty-eight West Summer Haven Lane. The property is, is questioned, is over my back fence. I understand a Dollar Store is being proposed. The building I see in my backyard is a Pine Top Lakeside Town Hall. I regret, I regard it as a beautiful building, along with a flag and the recent Christmas lights, something to be proud of, and we are. The consideration of the fourth Dollar Store within such a short distance is very questionable. What is the message that is being displayed for the community? I know that most of the residents in Summer Haven are attempting to upgrade our little community for the betterment of all. A wise man once said, quote, "The honor of one is the honor of all." I believe the town, unquote, I believe the town should and could do likewise. We should upgrade our individual, individual and collective home. It shows our pride and personal responsibility. Thank you, Dorothy Aery. Thank you both for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Punt. Tyler Peterson.
Um, Tyler Peterson, I live at two-sixty West Summer Haven Lane. And between the noise pollution, the light pollution, I almost get rear-ended just turning onto the street in general. So I think if you put in another turnoff, it's just going to cause more traffic problems. And along with having a three-year-old daughter who plays in the backyard, the amount of trash that may or may not travel into my yard or broken bottles that she may get hurt on, my dogs barking more aggressively because people are closer to my fence line back there when they haven't been and they protect her. It's just, it doesn't seem like a, a place. I mean, we can hear the bar when it gets quiet in our neighborhood. And it's all the way over there, so I feel like if there's a Dollar Store right behind where we are, it'll be a lot louder. Same thing with the garbage truck, it's just a lot more noise for us. And I think I'm one of the youngest people in my neighborhood, and it's an aging community. And I don't feel like it's fair for people that have been there longer than I've been alive that they'll have to deal with it. And I moved from a big city to come to a small town. And it just seems like we're putting all the wrong buildings in places that other buildings could come. Rip down the bowling alley for Anapa, where it just seems like we're more concerned about productivity over the families that are living here, because I'm sure there's families that would like more stuff to go out and do instead of traveling to Flagstaff or Phoenix. So if there was something to go in that field, it should be something more neighborhood and family-oriented over just another Dollar Store. Thank you.
Thank you. Based on what you just heard from a few of our citizens, does Dollar Tree have any additional comments?
Something, uh, and I, I'd like to think we're, we would be and, and, uh, will always be good neighbors, but, you know, when we came to Pine Top looking for a site, we, we found a piece of property that was zoned correctly and was available for sale. And, um, so that's how we ended up here. We didn't, we didn't designate a, a neighborhood that we thought we could pop up next to and, and try to build and, and upset status quo. That's, that's by no means what we're trying to do. We are putting up a privacy fence, uh, between the zoning. And we, uh, and our, the lighting impact stays within, in the site. We do a, a, a light study. Now, there, there's no candlelight, we do it based on candlelight. There, there will be no leakage off the site. And with that road, and by the time you get over there, there won't even be any lights on that side. It'll all be coming back towards the store. So I, I think the lighting will, will address itself, but I, I do understand where you're coming from and, and, uh, but, you know, the, there's a willing player. So that's what we took into consideration in the zoning. And so, you know, that's, that's just kind of how we ended up where we are today, and that's, that's why we chose that parcel. But we certainly don't want to offend anyone in our construction or our development. We want everybody to be happy and copacetic and, and, uh, and, and hope that, uh, at the end of the day, that, that's, that's how it ends up. But, uh, I will, if, if they, they do entertain this and, and, um, I, I'll be glad to, to. But I will, if, if they, they do entertain this, and, and I, I'll be glad to, to leave my part and be, be part of the process and, and be available for comments during, during the process, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Sir.
In our notes, it says that the metal, the building appears to be comprised of a metal exterior, and then it also shows a veneer finish. Can you tell me what the actual siding is?
So our original, the, the original prototype is for an interlocking metal exterior, and with city code, we changed that, so it'll be EPIS.
It'll be what?
EPIS. It'll be, it'll be brick up to three or four feet, and then it'll be a, an EPIS. It's like stucco. And, and it'll be a lighter, more earthy color as, as we discussed with Jeremiah. So we were just going with our basic, basic plan and then corrected that when you brought attention to it.
On the privacy fence, how tall is it and where exactly is it?
It'll be six feet, and it'll run from the, from, along the...
The highway.
That way, ah, over there, from, from the front of the property to the...
Not on the per, not on the perimeter though, interior, correct?
It'll, it'll be on the perimeter.
Okay, be on the perimeter, okay.
Yes, sir. On the opposite side of the road, the easement that comes from y'all's driveway out to the highway.
So you're saying you're going to use stucco here? On the mountain, you're going to use stucco? I would really do a study on that. I would really do a study on that. We're holding up up here with our weather pretty tough up here. Maybe use a, a siding or something like they did out there by the den. Do you know where that, what is that, a, a, is that a Dollar General or something out there? You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's a Dollar General. So the EPIS system isn't, it isn't exactly stucco.
Oh, so it's not as what they use in Dallas?
It's similar, but it's different. They use it on like jails, stuff like that.
Okay.
And it's not a bad system. There, there's, the one drawback of it is, in some cases, if it's not installed properly, water can get trapped behind it, and then a mold issue can occur if it's not installed according to manufacturer.
So it's still the foam with the stucco on it?
It's similar to stucco.
Similar to that?
It's similar, but it's different.
Okay. Don't see any stucco homes up here, that's why I'm, I'm questioning it.
I don't know about that comparison to, to jails, but it's...
It is on jails personally in the area.
Thank you.
So I would, just, just for a point of reference, I, I was a civil engineer on the Navo County Jail expansion, and that's precisely what they used.
That's exactly what they used.
Yeah.
So, and I apologize to ask you maybe some tough questions, but, you know, just hearing some of their concerns about lighting, and, and I hear you wanting to be a good neighbor, I mean, so I'm going to ask the what-if question, right? What if, what if, and you're saying it doesn't escape, this light doesn't go over there, what if it does?
I mean, what, what we do and what we'll do is get a WLS light study and to where it, it stays on and, and design that lighting system to stay within the property. And, you know, I don't know a what-if scenario, I mean, we're, we're going through all the motions to make sure it's, it doesn't. I mean, the only way it would is if the light fell off, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know how it would.
So he didn't answer really, but I mean, like, you know, I know, but like what I'm saying is, would you guys entertain a, a different lighting system to satisfy them? If they, if they take some pictures at night, let's say right now while you're not here, and then you get here and all of a sudden, you know, they've got it, what, what then? I mean, if you're saying it's not going to happen and that's what's satisfying us, but yet we didn't do our jobs, you know, so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be different. I mean, there'll, there'll be light in the sky if you look that way, it's going to be light over there, but is it leaking into, you know, where, i- if, if you're standing here or you lit up like you're here? No, and that's, that's how you determine the foot candles, and so, I mean, but yes, if you look this way, you're going to see light over there in the sky, but, but i- is it going to be on your property, leaking onto your property? No.
And then Jeremiah, like this is obviously a little bit different than was emailed to us earlier, right?
Right, so what was emailed earlier, obviously they had four, five, six different deficiencies, and after speaking with the architect and the engineer, they provided a resubmital yesterday, and so I just had time to review it briefly today and did note that all of my concerns were addressed except for the screening issue.
And, and again, I guess, just as a new commissioner, I, I just have to ask the question, like, if this meets zoning and, and it meets all of our town code, I, I guess I'm unclear on why it comes to the commission versus council.
So it's one of the two powers of the Planning and Zoning Commission. You guys have the authority, power to approve conditional use permits, and you have the authority to approve, conditionally approve or deny site plans. But that's one of the commission's two powers.
So they've corrected everything except the privacy fence?
Yeah, and the recommendation for that is not only include just a privacy fence, but also a tree every fifteen feet to help mitigate light and sound effects on the, on the neighbors in Summer Haven.
And then what about our situation with the retention plan?
That's how we vote.
That, that will be addressed at the council level, and if they, if they approve it, then fine, if not, then, then we wouldn't be able to use this system, it's clear. Then something else would have to be done.
We have to put that into our recommendation before it goes to council?
It could be contingent. It doesn't, so this doesn't go to council. You're not a recommending body on this, you're approving body on this. It's one of your two powers. So you can place the contingencies on it. Like I said, you can approve it, approve it with conditions, or deny it. And, and so that's what we're, that's why we're here tonight, Commissioner Farnum.
What are the hours of operation?
Maybe nine in the morning to eight and at night?
And then I, I guess my last question, because, and I, and I apologize for asking so many tonight, but, you know, according to our town's adopted general plan, I mean, we have, we have a goal of expanding the diversity of economic base to create a well-rounded economy and then to bolster the employment base while strengthening existing enterprises. I've also read, similar to Randy's study that, or comments, whatever the letters, that, 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 you know, an oversaturation of Dollar Stores actually has the effect of weakening a small community's economy, both, you know, private businesses, our existing stores, even, even your partnering store, you know, we have less business, so we're going to, we're going to give our employees less hours, maybe keep their wage the same, but we give them less hours, and that has a, you know, effect all over, and, and so I guess I, I just need help understanding where our general plan fits into, into this. And, and I, you know, I don't know who answers that question, but I'd, I'd love some thoughts on it.
I think that's a valid point that you raised as far as diversity. If we're, if the concept being brought forward is a Dollar Store and we have three of them, does that add to diversity, economic diversity? Does it address that concern in the general plan? That is one of the driving factors of, one of the key motivating things that you guys need to cast everything through when you make a decision as a planning and zoning commissioner, is, does this meet the intent of the, of the general plan? That's, that's the guiding document for the town, underlying, yes, it already meets the zoning requirements, and this is not a zoning request.
So we're going to close the public part of this and open it up for discussion on the county, the commission? Any additional thoughts?
Do we need to write these conditions down?
Yes.
Tonight?
The town wouldn't be bringing it to us to look at if it wasn't something that they thought would be useful for the town. That's up to us to decide whether or not they're right or not.
Not really, Tim.
Yeah, I don't know that I agree with that.
If someone purchases property and they follow all the specifications that they have to do to build a building...
And it's legal to do it, then they, they can build it there, I mean, if it's zoned for that...
So if this would get denied, is the town on the hook for a legal challenge?
Good question.
Nice question.
Potentially, yes. If they meet all the requirements, currently they do not meet all the requirements.
Right, right. So we could put our stipulations in there to meet those requirements, then we could bring it back and go for the final approval, approve what we're denied.
That's one option. Basically, you're saying you motion to table it until everything was addressed, maybe we wait to see if the council approves the code amendments, or if they have to get a variance, wait to see if that's approved. That could be one of the options.
Or we could just put that in the motion with the contingencies that it gets approved by the town council and then the town.
Well, if it goes to the town council, then we're going to, we're, we're going to know the, the, the stipulations that we have to abide by. So what it's almost is leaving it up to the town council if they will approve certain things.
But we can articulate the conditions.
But they will, they could override our, our conditions.
And that's the town.
They have the authority to, to do that. Why wouldn't we just let them everything over, see if we can get, what are you talking about, variance and things like that?
And/or a variance or amending the code. So the proposal next week going before council, just so everyone's aware, is to allow for onsite retention as long as it drains down in thirty-six hours, has a sealed drainage report from a licensed professional engineer that states, that attests to that, shows the calculations that show that it will drain down, and we probably would want to see an annual maintenance plan with that as well.
I mean, if we're making decisions off of potential lawsuits or legal action, let's just say this thing doesn't drain down and we flood out houses that were previously not flooding out, we have, and, and we approved it, you know, I mean, yeah.
Right, but the, the, and the drainage report that's sealed by the engineer, it attests to the fact that it will drain down, and so if it doesn't, then it's a liability issue for that engineer.
Now, if we have a freak of nature...
And/or a four-dollar tree.
We've had a few.
Not necessarily the town or the commission.
Correct, Jeremiah?
I'm sorry?
I mean, if it was by chance we get a freak of nature and a...
Oh, yeah.
Large, large, I mean, things happen.
Right, and they're not going to design this, you know, to, to capture every event. It's, it's, it's not feasible to ask anybody to do that. The town wouldn't do that. So the basis is basically, we ask them to capture nuisance flows and up to a certain amount, and after that, all bets are off. It's going to flood everywhere if we have a, a microburst or a significant enough event.
But they're capturing the hundred year two hour, which is about two point two, two point three inches, correct?
That's the intent, yeah, so I have to go back, they submitted an initial drainage report, I do have some comments on that, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to address that tonight, because that's not part of it, but, yeah, in, in that show, yes.
If we were to approve this tonight, when it comes time to take a vote, what conditions do we want to, would we want to include? A fire department report, ADOT, amending the code for the drainage? That the amending code gets passed for this to be able to go through? Right.
We, I think we want to look at a night sky, make sure we have a night sky lighting report also.
There's a photo lighting...
Exhibit?
Exhibit that you should have in there, and it does show that the lights are shielded away from the neighbors behind and to the side, that they're directed towards the Dollar Tree and, and towards the parking area, and that was one of the things that I did review.
And it is acceptable, okay? That was the big, the biggest concern that I've seen.
Not to say that some of that couldn't overflow into the neighbors, and the neighbors aren't going to see it, but the intent was to shield it away from them, from what I saw in the photometric.
We can put that in.
Which is also a requirement of the town code, so that wasn't one of the issues that I brought forward, because it looked like they had addressed that part of it, but of, of course, you're going to see some light if it, when it was dark there before. So the ask from staff is that in addition to the six-foot fence, which isn't going to do much, except for maybe you won't be able to see it if you're there and you're not six foot tall, right? But also to require the trees, so in time, it will shield them a little more.
Six-foot fence should help with the car lights.
Right, if they're actually going to have feet.
And are we standing firm on, has to be a block fence versus a wood fence?
And all the code says is, it has to be a, a fence capable of screening, so, and it's up to my, either mine or the commission's determination on what that is.
And what's our ability to, like, if it's, if it's wood, we've all seen those fail, what, what's, how can the city keep up with that, like, so we can make sure that that, that fence is in good condition, doing its job?
Right, so, I mean, I can't guarantee that that's going to occur, but it could present itself as a code enforcement action if it didn't. If there was a problem down the road, Dollar Tree wasn't maintaining the fence, I think I would prefer that it be a CMU block wall fence, because that would hold up to the test of time. It's, it's an added cost, but they don't have to come in, they don't have to come in and do continual maintenance on them.
Do I hear a motion? Can I make the motion? I move to approve the site plan for Dollar Tree located at one forty-one West Mountain Boulevard with the following five conditions. And you folks can help me articulate these. You need the fire department report, you need the ADOT approval, deceleration lane and such, traffic flow. I think we need to add the trees and the fences, because one or the other is what's in the code. If we're going to have both, I think that should be a condition in there, and it was already agreed upon. The lighting seems to be a big concern, so we need to make sure that the proper testing and the plan for the lighting is actually solid to be executed without disturbing...
It appears that the lighting is directed away from the residents as the code directs, yes.
And the retention plan, the council, I guess, has got to either amend the code or...
Or they would have to approach for a variance. Right, so the, the fire department's going to address their concerns?
Separately.
Yeah, separately.
Before the site plan is approved.
So we can, there's no way that they can get an assurance right now as to what those requirements would be, so I think that's...
There'll be four, four conditions and possibly a fifth on the siding. There's a lot of conversation about almost stucco, but not quite, but different, but better. I think that should be articulated a little bit better than that.
But, yeah, and it would have been nice to maybe bring in a sample or something, but that, we kind of blindsided them with that, but because it's traditional to use this in other systems, it does look nice, it holds up, it's a lot nicer than metal buildings, I'll tell you that, it looks a lot nicer than metal buildings. Like I said, i- if it's installed properly, it's a good system. It adds to the efficiency for, for heating and everything to the building.
If this gets approved, we should probably have some kind of examples or something to take to the council, or a better way of articulating that.
Right, so basically, I mean, but it's kind of hard to detail that without you having, having been exposed to it, but it's a common architectural feature.
Okay, and maybe that's the articulation.
It goes over other types of materials. It's basically, it stands for an exterior insulating, what is it? It, it's an exterior insulation and finishing system.
What's the warranty on the product? What's the warranty on the product?
Hold on a second, let's, we'll get a second before we can discuss this. He made a motion, we have to do a... Hold on a second, let's, we gotta get a second before we can discuss this. He made a motion, we have to do a second before we can discuss.
We're already in the discussion.
It, well, the motion, yeah, the motion.
Motion on the table.
I'll second it, so we can go in discussion.
Or you can amend the motion.
I'll se- I'll second it.
Can we hear what the motion is again?
The motion was to approve, I believe, what conditions?
And what are the conditions?
That's, I think, what's up with the discussion.
Fire department, that was on there. There's another one that
Adding the, from what I recall, Harry said, adding the fence and the, the trees is one. Allowing the town to revise the code for the
We don't need that. So that, um, well, that condition, I mean, is based off of the drainage. Either the town goes forward with it or it doesn't and they pursue a variance. But they wouldn't be able to get a building permit either way.
But that's, that would be a condition that we're putting on it for them to
I think, I think it's a dollar condition.
With the condition that they revise the code.
No, the, well, it's a stipulation based off of one or two things occurring. Either they have to obtain a variance or allow the, allow for the process for the code to change. Not necessarily that either one of those are gonna occur, but we, we have to have that.
Well
In order to issue a building permit to move forward,
Right, with the process.
opposing, we could issue a permit for.
Right.
And I still, I still wanna see that truck turning movement too for the refuse truck.
Truck turning.
And then lighting?
Well, we were assured that the lighting plan
Okay.
would satisfy.
The siding?
I think the council needs some kind of a understanding of what the siding is.
Jeremiah already approved it, Harry. He knows what the siding is, he engineered the jail.
Okay.
So he's very, very familiar with it.
Like I said, the, the, the system that they're proposing, I believe, would work as long as
There shouldn't be a question on that.
And, and, and they're already proposing that on the front door before I brought their attention that the council doesn't allow it.
Well, it sounds like there's three conditions. And correct me if I, if my notes are incorrect here. The trees and the fences, both, not one or the other.
Tree.
The screening. Um, the truck turnaround, I heard earlier, um,
It's relevant. They, they have the space for tractor trailer. I'm sure they have a space for, for, uh, a garbage truck.
But again, a garbage truck turning around in parking places is not the best way to do it.
And I used to drive tractor trailer, so I would disagree with you.
Disagree.
It can turn around in some tight places.
You've had too many accidents.
And the third was the variance or the code change. Now, is that a condition or is that something that we push up to the council?
So usually one of the requirements is that they submit a preliminary drainage report, which they, which they did. So the requirement for a drainage report was submitted, it's preliminary. Um, and a final drainage report would be required at the time of the building permit. So, um, they may have to amend their system if in the event they cannot, um, or the town council chooses not to amend the code or, uh, they are unsuccessful in a variance attempt. So those are the two options that they have. But I think that they've already shown, uh, in the calculations that I've scanned through in the drainage report, that this is a feasible system for that site. It just is contingent upon the obtaining of a variance or the town code changing and so I don't know how the, the commission, um, would like to address that as a, um, as a contingency or, um, allow that as part of the process for, it's gonna be required for a building permit regardless. But this is the time to, to address it upfront. They have submitted a preliminary drainage report though, that shows that the system is valid. If, i- if it is approved.
And let me, let me just add, Keith Johnson, the town is in favor of making that drainage change. Uh, we, we had actually talked about this before this came up, I believe.
Yeah.
And that it was something that we had wanted to go down and, and do anyways, so we believe that the council will go forward and accept that vote change next week.
So maybe a mute, a mute point, really.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, but we still have to put it into our
I would still make it a condition.
You can contingent, memorialize that as part of one of the conditions. It's not a, it's not necessarily but it, it's
Resolved in seven days.
It's gonna be resolved either, well, the code would take thirty days to, after, if the council approves it, it would take thirty days to amend the code.
To take effect.
Right.
Well, there's expertise up here in the commission that's really concerned about this truck turnaround for the trash. I don't think we oughta treat that lightly. I would recommend that remain a condition to have that looked at.
It, it, it can't be changed, Harry. It's engineered already. I, I mean, a garbage truck? To hold up a building, a garbage truck? When they're gonna be delivering with tractor trailers?
It's not holding anything up, it's just a
Well, they're gonna deliver with tractor trailers. So to me, a garbage truck is a heck of a lot smaller than a tractor trailer. Okay, and they're not backing in off of White Mountain Boulevard. To me, they're gonna come in, they're gonna turn right in front of the store and then they're gonna back down to the roll-up doors, correct? So your garbage truck is gonna come in off of White Mountain Boulevard, go right down, dump the dumpster back up. You're, you're talking about a garbage truck compared to a tractor trailer? No comparison.
Okay, now, when this goes to vote, if there's a commissioner that's got a concern on this?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. That's why we have, well, five voting now.
But to add it as a condition for a commissioner to look at the plan with the, with the Dollar Tree people?
He's already looked at the plan. Jeremiah has looked at the plan already. And I'm sure this company has some legitimate engineers. You know what I mean?
Okay.
So I mean, I, I think we're asking for something that they're not gonna change anyways. What are you gonna change? The whole design of the building and the parking lot and everything for our garbage truck? Parking? Don't think so.
Are you ready to take a vote?
And the siding change?
And the siding.
Presented different from what was in?
I just think it needs to be articulated better for the council. But, yeah, we should note it.
Yeah, if, if they
Give me a second.
She said they're for a, a plan.
Yeah.
I think once you see it, you won't have an issue, so I don't have a problem with it.
We're gonna, I'm sorry, uh, can you stand it to the mic, please, so we can get it for the minutes and for the people watching? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'll be glad to, uh, share a, 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 a plan that shows that. And I think once you see it, you'll, you'll see that it's thirty-six feet between parking places and the truck will be able to pull in and back out. Uh, and we, we even put reinforced concrete where the truck comes, so when it lifts up, it doesn't, it's not messing up the parking lot. Uh, but there's plenty of room for that, that garbage truck onsite without affecting any of parking or anything to pull in, back up, turn around and get gone. So, but I'll be glad to share that for sure. I can send that, uh, tomorrow in an email.
Thank you.
We had a motion that was seconded.
Need the motion?
Yeah, please.
I move to approve the site plan for Dollar Tree located at one forty-one West White Mountain Boulevard with the following conditions. Pursue a variance or code change for the drainage system. Take a look at the turning of the garbage truck. Where the semi trucks are gonna also be turning.
I do have a question, Jeremiah, can I?
Hang on, I'm in the middle of a motion. I'm in the middle of a motion here. And we're going to ask for the privacy fence and the trees. That's one or the other is in the code. We're gonna ask for both, and it was agreed upon. And a little better detail on the stucco. For the council's benefit. I don't know if that's a condition or not.
I, I just don't think that, um, that meets the requirement or the stipulation for the code, because they're asked basically to provide a system that's not metal and that's what they've done.
Okay, so there won't be a fourth condition?
In my, in my opinion, they've met that requirement.
Okay, so we'll have three conditions?
Well, that's what they said, but it's not written, so we can make a requirement that they use what they're gonna say they're gonna use.
So they, in, in the amended package, they are showing the EPIS system, the CMU blocks. That should be at your desk there. So they, they are showing that, so that's part of what they're asking you to approve now.
I'm saying, yes, it is still not a bu- a building permit. You still have to approve that.
Right, basically this allows us to start reviewing it for a building permit.
You have approved the drainage system that they have already, correct? That they had engineered?
They have it engineered.
Already approved.
I cannot approve it until the code is amended.
Okay.
But it's an engineered system.
But it is an engineered retention system.
Right.
Engineered to hold water and drain down within thirty-six hours.
And I still second it.
All those in paper?
Can we?
Aye.
Sorry.
Opposed? Four to one.
With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is adjourned.